Mount Piscataw, Memphis and their entire district on this national stage, congratulations. Ms. Howe. At this time, we have a special recognition and we would like to turn it over to interim superintendent, Dr. Richmond, to recognize the T-VAS Level 5 Schools and Principals.
Thank you Chair Coleman. Good evening. We're proud to recognize our T-VAS Level 5 Schools where growth becomes greatness. At the center of this achievement stands our principals, whose leadership has inspired teachers, students and families to aim higher and to achieve more. Tonight, we honor you for your excellence you've cultivated in your schools and in our district's principals. At this time, we ask our Level 5 Principals to please stand, be recognized for your outstanding leadership. And I'm going to call each school, and as I call your schools principals, I'd love for you to come up. Also, in showing solidarity, I want to thank Ms. Isabelle and the UEA around Go Red for Ed. Each Tuesday, we'd like for teachers and educators throughout our community to go red for Ed. So I want to thank you all for your support, and at this time, we'll recognize our wonderful principals. A. Macy O. Walker Middle School. American Way Middle School. Valmore Ridgeway Elementary. Bell Forest Community School. Bellevue Middle. Bolton High. Brownsville Road Elementary. Central High. Cherokee Elementary. Chimney Rock Elementary. City University School for Girls Preparatory. Colonial Middle. Compass Middle, Compass Community School, Burgler. Compass Community School, Frazier. Compass Community School, Hickory Hill. Compass Community School, Midtown. Cordova High School. Cordova Middle School. Craigman Middle School. Douglas High. Dunbar Elementary. Freedom Prep Elementary, Mill Branch. Freedom Prep Elementary, Park Coos, or Park Rose, I'm sorry. Freedom Prep Middle, Brown Lee. Freedom Preparatory Academy. Freedom Preparatory Academy Flagship. Georgian Hills Middle. Germantown High. Hawkins Mill Elementary. Ida B. Wells Academy. Jackson Elementary. Journeys Coleman, K-8. Kingsbury Elementary. Kip Memphis Collegiate Elementary. Leadership Preparatory Charter School. Lawrence Elementary. Maxine Smith Steen. Medical District High. Memphis Business Academy, Hickory Hill Elementary School. Memphis Delta Prep. Memphis Grizzlies. Memphis Rise. Memphis Steam Academy. Middle College. Mitchell High. Newberry Elementary. Oak Haven Elementary. Oak Haven High School. Oak Haven Middle. Oakshire Elementary. Parkway Village Elementary. Perea Elementary. Power Center Academy Elementary and High School. Power Center Academy Middle Southeast. Raleigh Egypt High. Ridgeway High. Riverwood Elementary. Rozelle Elementary. Sheffield Elementary. Shelby Oaks Elementary. Sherwood Middle. Soulsville Charter. Southwind Elementary. Springdale Elementary. Valentine Elementary. Well Station Elementary. West Haven Elementary. White Station High. White Station Middle. White Haven Elementary. White Haven High. Windridge Elementary. And last but not least, Woodstock Middle School. I also want to recognize some of our schools that went from Level 1 to Level 5. Bolton, Douglas, Memphis Delta Prep, Riverwood Elementary, Rozelle, Sheffield, Springdale and Windridge. All of those schools went from a Level 1 to Level 5. Next slide. We also had a number of schools that had a T-VAS Level 4. And we also want to recognize those schools as well. Egypt Elementary. Let's give Egypt Elementary a round of applause. Evans Elementary. Hanley K-8. Havenview Middle. Hollis F. Price Middle College. Memphis Academy of Science and Engineering, Middle and High. Memphis Business Academy Elementary. Memphis Business Academy, Hickory Hill Middle. Power Center Academy Elementary Southeast. Scenic Hills Elementary. Sharp Elementary. Southern Avenue Charter School of Academic Excellence Creative Arts. Star Academy, Treville Middle, White Station Elementary and Whitney Elementary. Next slide. And again, together we made growth possible. We want to thank our teachers for their dedication in the classroom, our students for their hard work and perseverance. Parents and families for your support and partnership. School leaders and staff for your guidance and vision. Community leaders and partners for your advocacy. And last but not least, investors and supporters for believing in the power of education. That completes my special recognitions. Thank you.
Again, we say congratulations to one and all. Thank you, Dr. Richmond. We are now onto the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments, Dr. Richmond?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to add item 9.12, Cigna Extension.
Board members? You don't have-
Oh, for when we get to that?
We'll get to it.
You're not going to do anything till next week anyway. Alright, motion second.
Is there a motion and a second?
I move to approve the agenda. Second?
Motion by Board Member Murphy, second by Board Member McKissick. Roll call vote, please.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Porter?
Aye.
Board Member Murphy?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Man, y'all so dusty.
Board Member McKinney?
Yes.
Board Member Otte?
Aye.
Board Member Williams?
Aye.
Chair Coleman?
Aye.
You have ayeed and affirmative.
Thank you. That motion passes. Now onto the Chair's report. From the Office of Academic Curriculum and Instruction, Curriculum Associates presented our beginning of the year data by regions to our principals and MTSS leaders, as well as during AOTI and the Greatness Briefing between 9/4 and 10/25, 9/4 through 9/10/25. Schools began sharing the iReady diagnosis report with families following the conclusion of the fall window, and many met with parents during parent-teacher conferences. So, K-8 parents, if you have not received your iReady diagnostic report yet, please contact your child's teacher. Did we know that families can access the iReady Family Porter from home using the unique MSCS District Code? This information has been provided to parents by schools and have been shared in the September family communication emailed by the district's communication team. If you want to learn more about the iReady Family Porter, please join the September 29th Family Support Session, as curriculum and instruction and curriculum associates will review key information about the iReady platform and support with understanding the iReady Family Porter. Thank you. We're now onto the superintendent's report. Interim Superintendent Richmond?
Yes ma'am, thank you Madam Chair. Good evening, Board Chair Coleman, board members, community partners and stakeholders. Tonight, we begin one of the most important journeys our district can undertake. The process of closing and repurposing schools. This work is not easy, but it is necessary for us to ensure our facilities match the needs of our students, our families and our future. Tonight's presentation will outline the roadmap that will carry us, with transparency and accountability towards recommendations next February. This journey will ask for patience, trust and collaboration, because the path to doing what's right is rarely the easiest path. At this moment, I'd like for Ms. Stewart, board members, we're going to go through the school closures and repurposing policy and process and timeline for this year, and at this time, I'll pass it on to Ms. Stewart. Ms. Stewart?
Thank you, Dr. Richmond. Good evening, Board. So, school closures and repurposing 2025-26, and this is, as Dr. Richmond said, the brief timeline and procedure and policy overview. The goal of this presentation, the goal of this process is to complete the due diligence, engagement and legal review to bring formal recommendations to the MSCS Board for a February 2026 vote in alignment with Board Policy 7002, which includes school closures and disposition. Some policy highlights, with the purpose is to ensure district-owned real estate is managed to align with educational, operational, community and neighborhood goals. The scope applies to acquisition, disposition, maintenance, use and operation of district-owned real estate. It also applies to closure of district authorized charter schools identified as priority schools. Some key definitions from this policy are real estate, which is land, buildings and permanently affixed items. Another set of key definitions is capacity utilization, which is simply the enrollment versus the programmatic capacity of a school. More policy highlights here with the policy statement. Facilities should support education, community services and neighborhood development. They should be well-maintained, appropriately constructed facilities, improve academic achievement. For the closing of school facilities, some of the considerations are declining enrollment, population shifts, facility condition and physical impact. Those are all identified in the policy. The superintendent makes recommendations by the end of the second quarter of the prior school year. So that's the school year we're currently in for next school year's effective closures. School closing impact reports are required per policy. Those reports include a rationale and academic impact. They also included analysis of effects on students, staff, parents and community. The guiding principles per Policy 7002 and the framework are that the process be transparent, equitable and legally compliant. We prioritize continuity of education for students and receiving school placement plans. That means where they'll go once their current school is consolidated. That we develop school closing impact reports, which I just mentioned, and conduct two public hearings per closure. We will consider repurposing properties for community benefit in this process. We will also ensure that our standard reversionary clauses in alignment with district strategic priorities are included. Again, the purpose, this is in alignment with Board Policy 7002 and the MSCS facilities framework. This action plan outlines the process for the proposed closure, transfer or repurposing of the following schools. Number 1, Lucy Elementary. This is a proposed transfer to Millington Municipal School District. Number 2 is Ida B. Wells Academy. This is a closure repurposing for district use. Frazier Corning Elementary, this is a closure consolidation. Chickasaw Middle, this is a closure consolidation. And finally, Georgian Hills Elementary is a closure consolidation. These are the action steps and timelines. This is Phase 1. Initiation and due diligence, which we are currently in, it began in August, runs through October 2025. We will form Facilities Closure Subcommittee under the Ad Hoc Facilities Planning Committee. The members of this are board representatives, legal, academics, operations, community stakeholders. That's been done at the Facility Ad Hoc Committee. We will commission school closing impact reports for each affected school. This is again, one of the requirements of policy. In that school, those school impact reports, you will see enrollment and utilization, academic performance, facility condition and maintenance needs, financial impacts and student reassignment and transportation needs. We will publish all of this data on the MSCS website, including those factors you see there. Again, we will develop receiving school plans for displaced students, ensuring capacity, academic programming and facilities upgrades at all schools to receive students from closed or consolidated schools. Phase 2 runs from October to December 2025. This is community engagement. We'll conduct the public hearings. Again, we have to have two per closure proposal. We'll partner with the Ad Hoc Engagement Committee. We will hold these public hearings at the affected schools and community centers within those communities and provide translation services and written reports. We will host community forums in all impacted ZIP codes to address parent concerns that include safety, transportation and academics, and we will share possible repurposing concepts. Some of those could be ideas like youth hubs or adult education or career centers, things that benefit the community. Document feedback and publish a public-facing summary of input. Again, this will be on our district website. Phase 3 is the legal and intergovernmental review. This is December 2025 through January 2026. With the Lucy Elementary transfer, we'll be negotiating with the Millington Municipal School District and drafting an inter-local agreement for property transfer. This will also, this will include the reversionary clause. We will confirm with Tennessee Department of Education and Shelby County Commission if required. For closure and repurposing of the other schools, we will ensure compliance with Title 1, IDEA and federal and state regulations. We will conduct all legal and fiduciary reviews, charter protection, conflict of interest safeguards. And then we'll finalize the repurposing recommendations. For Ida B. Wells, as mentioned, we will explore an alternative use. This could be student services or adult learning center or district operations. For Chickasaw Middle School, Frazier Corning Elementary School and Georgian Hills Elementary School, we will evaluate the potential use or disposition of those buildings. Phase 4 is the Board Decision, which is during the month of February 2026. We will prepare the Board Resolutions for all of the closures, consolidations and the transfer of Lucy Elementary to Millington, the closure of Frazier Corning, Georgian Hills, Ida B. Wells and Chickasaw. And then a repurposing or disposition framework and ideas for vacated facilities. The Board Presentation will come with full documentation of the school impact reports, the community input summaries, the legal and financial analyses and the receiving school assignments. Again, the Board Vote is in February 2026. Phase 5 is Implementation. This is post-Board Vote. So from March to July 2026, the rest of the school year. We'll notify the families and staff of final decisions. We'll reassign the students to the designated schools. This will include transportation plans. We'll work on the, we'll work on the HR Transition Plan for affected staff, and this can include their placement and reassignment and RIF protocols. We will secure and repurpose the facilities and transfer Lucy Elementary to Millington per the inter-local agreement. And finally, we will initiate the reuse and disposition process for closed schools. All deliverables by February 2026. Here's the list of deliverables. I believe I've said them, but I'll say them again. Completed school closing impact reports, two public hearings per school completed and documented, inter-local agreements for Lucy transfer, draft repurposing and disposition framework for remaining schools and the Board Resolution Package for closures and transfers.
We'll move on to questions now. Board Member McKinney, then Board Member Porter.
Thank you, Dr. Richmond, for this presentation. I do have a couple of questions. One, due to regionalization, could you also include what regions this is going to impact in terms of the schools that we're closing? And when in your impact closure report, if you could include what regions will receive those schools, those students, if we are transferring, when we're transferring students?
Yes, thank you for that question, Board Member McKinney. These sets of schools will impact the Northwest and Southwest regions. And again, we know as we look at our facilities utilization, FCI's deferred maintenance, particularly the schools that are located in those regions are the regions with the lowest utilization, the highest FCI's, as well as capital and deferred maintenance needs.
And the second question I have, you talked about secure. If you could include in that impact report what the security plan is, because of the, some of the, historically, we've had problems once we close a building and what happens to it after that?
Yes ma'am, we will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Porter?
Thank you Chair. During the implementation process, I noticed that the schools still be in for us to implementation. So I was trying to see what would be the, how we really thought through, well, you guys are not new to this, but the, I would like to see the implementation plan on have academic, the least amount of academic disruption that we'll have for our students. Because I've noticed that from March to July, school, well, school will be out in June. So I'm just trying to see the less, the less minimum impact that we will have on the academic process.
Yes sir. Thank you Board Member Porter for that question. So, for board members and the listening audience, what we wanted to do tonight was to bring you all the timeline and framework for the actual policy. Next month, what we'll bring you will be some of the data. If you go back to Slide 3. Next slide. Next slide. I'm sorry, go down. Next, next, next. Right there. So you see where commission school closing impact reports for each affected school. What we'll bring the Board and the listening public in October will be these data. Enrollment, utilization, academic performance, facilities, condition index. For all of the schools, we'll bring you this information. As we move through, we'll also provide you with a comprehensive implementation plan. But again, for tonight, we wanted to notify the Board, ask the Board if it was okay for us to move forward and to present the policy that aligns with school closures for you all to better understand and to be informed around the timeline and the framework for how we would get there by February in order for you all to take action if we wanted to move- would get there by February in order for you all to take action if we wanted to move forward on these five schools.
Vice Chair Love.
I have a couple of questions related to academics. Are you going to identify what schools, the list of schools that you presented to us, what was the enrollment like, and what was the academics that caused the school to close? I don't want, this is just me. I don't want for a school to merge, disrupt the community, disrupt the teachers, and the principals, and the students. And we don't have a surefire way to increase the academics when the school merges.
Thank you, Vice Chair Love, for that question. Yes, ma'am. As we bring that information, we'll bring what the school academic performance is, but we'll also bring to you all how, if we decide to move forward, how we will enhance that school and/or the school that we will be possibly merging those students into. We'll also be bringing you the academic performance of those schools so that we can ensure that the learning outcomes of those students will be improved upon as we move them into other places, other schools and other sites, if, again, we move forward.
Next question. I would like to see what services y'all took out over the years. Services. Y'all took out over the years. What did y'all invest, and what did y'all take out over the years?
Yes, ma'am. For each school that we bring, we'll bring you a comprehensive, a comprehensive assessment of that school over the past three to five years.
And my final question is transportation. Both principals in my district that I represent, both principals have talked to me year after year about transportation for the elementary schools. They say it rains, it's cold outside, the kids don't come to school. Will you include this in your facilities report?
Yes, ma'am, we will. As we, again, as we start to look at right size in our district, one thing that I will note for the listening public, as well as for the Board, we know that that's going to possibly mean more students being placed on buses. Now, that can be value-add in some instances, and in some instances, it may not be what if, but if I hear you correctly, when it rains, if that's impacting students coming to school, then what you're saying is possibly if we're putting them on a bus, that may improve attendance is what we would be looking for, right?
Board Member McKissick.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Richmond, I know that you're going to be very comprehensive when you come to us next month, but there's the right now. And right now, there are families, students, that are in shock hearing this news and information. Speaking to the school that's in the district that I represent, Ida B. Wells, first of all, I want to let the families and the students know that there's a whole lot of learning to be left in this school year for Ida B. Wells. I'm excited and thrilled to be supporting the school with allocations that will be voted upon just this month for field trips, student and teacher incentives. So we are still very much supporting you throughout this time period. So can you speak to, perhaps maybe not now, but maybe even tomorrow, the next day or two, what are you going to say to these families for right now who might want to hear from you right now, not in October, when the details come out? Because I know there's a lot of just deep concern at this moment upon hearing their schools on this list.
Thank you, Board Member McKissick, for that question. Again, we don't take any of this lightly. We realize that whenever we're repurposing or closing and merging schools, it does impact families. Ideally, I wouldn't want to bring this in September, because as you all know, we still have approximately eight months of school remaining. I was doing this in reference to the Ad Hoc Committee recommending us bringing it now. We wanted to be able to, again, be in line with the policy. We want to get out into the communities and talk about what impact this will have, and in order for us to do that, we needed to start now so that we could adhere to the timeline of having the two community meetings so that come February, we can vote on it. What I would say is, at this point in time, we've talked to the principals. I don't have a problem myself or my team coming out and speaking with students, as well as teachers and parents. The school year is not over. I would encourage them to continue to do their very, very best, for teachers to continue teaching, for students to continue learning, and for them to know that we're with them for the long haul. I want these schools to operate each and every day just like they're going to be open for another 50 years, because our students are important to us. But I also realize we have to start making some of these extremely tough decisions. I would hope, particularly at a school like Ida B. Wells, where it's a choice school, it's not a zoned school, that we can find some other choice, high-performing options for those parents and those students if the decision is made to perhaps close or repurpose that particular building.
Thank you for that, and that's so good, just to make it plain. And perhaps maybe the leaders of these schools, if they can somehow communicate directly with their families in light of this, even in the short term, the next few days, just reach out to those students and families.
Yes, ma'am. What the team and I have planned to do, we're going to send this timeline, and we're also sending some frequently asked questions. As we move into October and November, we'll start to reach out to those schools, teachers, families, and the community. Again, what we wanted to do today was to, first of all, bring this before the Board so that we could get you all's permission to move forward with having these conversations. Yes, ma'am.
Board Member Williams.
Nothing about the impact of teaching and instructional programs. These schools are coming with a score already. So who's going to take the blame for the score that they will earn this year coming at the schools that they may transfer to? Will those principals be held responsible? And what impact will this have on the teachers in the buildings? Will they follow the children? And will they have the same teachers where they're going? And they accept instructional program? I'm thinking about the long-term thing of the TCAP, of the testing. When the testing comes out, who's going to own the data? Both schools or the school that they're in? And how will they square that?
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for your question. Again, as we start to have our community meetings, as we start to bring data forward, we will share these, share this information along with those data with you. However, in the past, when we have closed or merged a school, the students will merge into a school, and no one receives the school that is being closed data.
So I guess the question would be, if School A is coming to School B, and School A has a lower achievement rate, it's going to impact School B. So will the principals follow the children as well, the students as well? Or would you, what happens to the instructional program? Do they, all of the teachers go with the students, including the administrators, or what?
Again, just like in years past, in some instances, depending on the administration, the administration's tenure, if there's an administrator in School A, and that administrator is choosing to leave, and there's an opportunity for the administrator in School B to apply and to be placed in that position, I would say yes. But if not, if I'm an administrator, and my school is being closed or repurposed, there's probably a likelihood that I'm not going to go to the school that I'm being merged in. In relationship to teachers, we always give teachers the opportunity to follow the students if there are openings at that particular school. And there should be, because, again, we're increasing the enrollment.
So they will not necessarily follow their own students, then?
There's a possibility that they may not. But again, those data will be things that we will bring forth as we bring you all the impact reports around student reassignment.
Will the teachers in these buildings have an opportunity to follow the students or to transfer? Would they not be in fear of losing their teaching positions?
Yes, sir. They will have an opportunity to apply and to follow. We would want them to, in fact, follow the students. If they're highly effective teachers, and if they love and care about the communities that they're working in, and we're going to merge or consolidate into a school that's still within that community, we would welcome those teachers to follow those students. That would make most sense to me.
So how long will they expect to be in this, in these locations? How long will it take to repurpose or rebuild the schools? It's the entire year, is it one year, two years?
We're not rebuilding in the schools. What we're doing is, we'll have a series of community meetings to see if we should close and merge schools into existing schools. But none of these decisions have been made at this time.
So there's a possibility that they, that they will not be going back to their schools?
There is a possibility, depending on the community meetings, and depending on what the Board decides to do come February, when we decide to bring the recommendations to the Board in February to vote.
So those teachers who would be in that predicament, what data will they own, since they will obviously be working in two buildings at the same year?
No, sir. They won't be working in two buildings at the same year. They'll finish this school year, the consolidation and/or merger, merging of the schools will not, will not happen until the following year.
So they will start off in the school that they will be in?
They're already in a school. They'll complete the year where they are now. Everyone will stay where they are now, and in February, there'll be a decision around if we should close and merge certain schools. If we decide to do that, that transition will happen over the summer.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So they will own their own data this year?
Yes, sir.
Board Member Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think you just answered my question, so I don't have to ask two of my questions, because you've already answered those. The one question I want to ask is, when we decide or get to that time that we are getting ready to merge some of these schools, will the parents have a choice of where they want to send their children, or we're just going to place them where we think they should go?
All our parents, through open enrollment, whether it's open enrollment or whether it's optional school enrollment, we are a choice district. However, once we decide what those school assignments are, parents in that attendance zone will be assigned to that particular school. If that occurs, then that's where the student is assigned, based on the attendance zone. However, a parent can always apply for an open enrollment or an optional school transfer.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Board Member O'Tay.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Richmond, most of my questions have been asked this way, security plan, utilization. So I'm going to ask about, do we have a timeline on when we're going to do those community meetings? And will we do the, within one of the schools or the community centers? And will that, will they be provided with alternative bus routes and things like that, and rezoning information?
Again, tonight was to bring the information before the Board. If the Board is okay with staff and our moving forward, we'll then start to schedule the community meetings, with two meetings per school. So with it being five schools, we'll have a total of 10 community meetings. Once we have those community meetings, within those community meetings, Ms. Stewart, Transportation Team, all of my staff will be there to answer any questions that parents may have. During that time, we will look at those school assignment zones to see if and when students may need transportation. And all of that will be part of what we will bring to you all in February in regards to if we're closing or merging a school.
Thank you.
Board Member McKenney. Board Member McKissick.
Yeah, the other, the other, the other Mac. I just wanted to move that we move forward with approving so that the superintendent and team can, can do what they need to do.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one quick question. Developing, receiving school plans for displaced, I don't like the word displaced students, but nevertheless, when you have these community meetings, can we include the possible schools that they're going to be going to also? Because there's an influx of students coming into the building that those parents need to know that other students, so can they be included in those meetings also?
Yes, ma'am. One of the things we'll be talking about is, again, if the school is repurposed, where those students will be reassigned, so we can ensure that those parents and those communities are part of it. And normally, what we do is, we have a community meeting at the school that's possibly being repurposed, as well as the school that is possibly receiving the students, because generally, they're all within the same community.
Thank you. We're now on to the agenda of staff action items. The first item on the agenda is 9.1, approval, Portaleef First Eight Memphis Head Start contract, $2,041,000.
I had my light on.
I'm sorry. Board Member, Vice Chair Love, I apologize.
We have closed schools down and merged schools, two schools in District Seven. If you could show us the good, the bad, and the ugly of merging three schools or two, I would want to see that.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we will.
And the final question, Ad Hoc Planning Committee, make sure the people that's on the ad hoc are community members in our districts.
Ad hoc?
Okay. Now we'll move on. Approval, Portaleef First Eight Memphis Head Start contract, $2,041,000.
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend that the Shelby County Board of Education approve agreements with Portaleef Head Start in the amount of $2,041,000 to continue managing pre-K services, wraparound support, and instructional coaching. This contract supports 13 classrooms serving three- and four-year-old children and their families. The contract pays $157,000 per classroom.
9.2, approval, First Eight Memphis Wraparound Contract, $1,348,650.
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend the Shelby County Board of Education approve the contract with First Eight Memphis in the amount of $1,348,650 to provide comprehensive wraparound services and educational support in 37 pre-K classrooms for the 2025-26 school year.
9.3, approval, First Eight Memphis Preschool Direct Services Contract, $5,49,511.
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend the Shelby County Board of Education approve the contract with First Eight Memphis in the amount of $5,49,511 for preschool direct services and 37 classrooms for the 2025-26 school year.
9.4, approval, First Eight Memphis Community Partners Contract, $200,000.
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend the Shelby County Board of Education approve the contract with First Eight in the amount of 200,000 and 100,000 per classroom to continue managing full implementation of educational services for four-year-old children and their families in a total of two community partner programs. The community partner programs house one and kid-dazzle, cadazzle serving 40 students. The recommendation is aligned with the mandate by the Tennessee Department of Ed to ensure high-quality pre-K programs across the state.
9.5, approval, First Eight Memphis Coaching Contract, $259,000.
Yes, Madam Chair. I recommend the Shelby County Board of Education approve the First Eight contract in the amount of $259,000 to provide comprehensive services in 37 classrooms for the 2025-26 school year.
Vice Chair Love.
In this contract, they are, our teachers are First Eight teachers.
Excuse me, Ms. Gordon.
Good evening.
Good evening, Superintendent Richmond and the Board Chairs. Yes, ma'am, those are Memphis Shelby County Schools' teachers. We hired the teachers and they're working in outside of our school buildings.
Thank you.
9.6, approval, University of Tennessee Knoxville Affiliation Agreement, no dollar amount?
Yes, Madam Chair. It's recommended that Shelby County Board of Education approve the University of Tennessee Knoxville College of Social Worker affiliation agreement of 2025-26 school year.
9.7, approval, sale of former Humes Middle School to New Ballet Ensemble, $257,000.
Yes, Madam Chair. It's recommended that Shelby County Board of Education declare surplus and approve the sale of Humes Middle School at 659 North Monazis, Memphis, Tennessee 38107 to New Ballet Ensemble for $257,000. New Ballet Ensemble commits to operating the proposed performing arts school as a district contract school.
Board Member McKinney?
Thank you. I had the opportunity on Thursday, last Thursday, to attend the community meeting that New Ballet had at Dave Wilson in, in Smokey City. And I just wanted to report back to the board members what I heard from the community so that you can get an idea of the, they were very excited about the prospect of having the MEM Arts or having a performing arts school there. One of the things that I think I heard from the community is also there was concern about, was this going to be a co-design, a co-creation of what it looked like, but also what was provided, the programming? And there was also a question of commitment to local participation in, as, as part of the agreement that we have in renovating and also in thinking about who's in the building and who gets to have space. As you know, there, on the second floor, they're talking about letting that be nonprofits and, and community organizations. So I wanted to report back because I know we had, all of us were dispersed doing other board things. And I wanted to make sure that I shared the information that I received and heard. They were emphatic about not wanting a, a, what is that, station?
Substation.
Yes, the substation. Yeah, they didn't want, they didn't want a substation. But they did want to make sure that this was something that was not done to the community but was done with the community. And so I wanted to make sure that I provided that feedback to you all as we make the decision. I also want to put on the record as well as that, again, I have asked a lot of questions about this, this deal. While we are, we, we have a duty, a fiduciary duty to, I think, dispose of and use our property in a way that is beneficial not only to our students but to the community. I applaud us in thinking about doing this. However, I want us to be clear about the amount. We are sitting on a piece of property that has been appraised at $1.4 million. The land itself is worth $500,000. I understand, I understand that we, there are some extensive problems in that building. And yet I want us to also understand that part of our duty per policy and state law is that we are looking, if this is a way that we can be physically responsible to raise revenue in this way, we do that because that can help us with other things. So I want us to also be careful about thinking about the precedence that we set when we go low, we got a piece of property and we go low. Again, I absolutely agree with the what. I want us to think very clearly about the how. We can get this done, we can get this done innovatively. And so that is, that is what I wanted to make sure that I stated for my fellow colleagues.
Board Member Murphy? I'm sorry, Board Member Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with you, Commissioner McKinney, but I think that this has been a long time coming and they already have everything set in place so that they can move expeditiously because they've been going through this for the last 10 years to try to make this a reality. And so I think that they already know what they want to do, how they want to do it, how they want to move with it. I think sometimes we go low but for the benefit of our children, I think that we need to just take that opportunity so that our children can experience other things. Thank you.
Board Member Williams?
Since we do know that, let me be clear, the value of the property is what? The appraised value?
$1.4 million.
So why are we selling beneath the value of the property? No, we're going to sell it for what it's worth. It's like hadn't rotten in all these years. I'm just, my curiosity is why would you, why are we selling property that is under, are undervaluing the appraisal? I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying what is the rationale behind doing it? I wouldn't sell my house for listed and appraised and no one else would with good sense. I said, but if the appraised values includes that.
So that means when it's time to vote, we can vote. We're not going to debate about it. That's not what we're supposed to do. So this will be on the, if we approve it, this will be on the agenda for next week and your vote will say how you feel about it. 9.8, approval, sale of 3030 Jackson Administration Building to New Day, Tennessee. Why does it say no dollar amount?
Thank you for that question, Madam Chair. At this time, would you go through the presentation for me, Ms. Stewart, and then explain why there's no dollar amount attached to item 9.8? Thank you.
Yes, sir. So if you remember in committee, the, I'll read this recommendation to you because it says it in there, but then I'll explain it. So it is recommended that the Shelby County Board of Education declare surplus and approve the sale of 3030 Jackson Campus, the parcel numbers are listed there, to New Day, Tennessee in exchange for the full cost and project management of renovating per FDA guidelines, leasing for 10 years, and relocating all district operations in Building Seven to a warehouse at 3456 Myers Road. So somewhere, Yolanda, I think it might be later on in the presentation, the current estimated value of that move, so taking everything we have operating in Building Seven, picking it up and taking it to the Myers Road Warehouse plus renovating it to FDA guidelines because you have to have certain dock doors and certain temperatures in there for all the food that goes in there, all of that cost, and then the lease for 10 years. The total dollar amount right now is estimated, their original offer was $4 million. The current estimate is $6 million, but they're trying to get, work with the owner of the warehouse to get it down to about a $5 million total. And I'll have a better number for you next week at the board vote meeting. But right now, the estimate's around $5 million for all of that service of relocating us.
If, if more discussion needs to be had, board members, I encourage you to have more discussion around this particular item. And if you all have further questions, please feel free to ask those questions at this time.
Board Member McKinney?
So let me, let me make sure I'm understanding. They're going to pay, what is it that we're getting out of this? Let's be clear.
We get a 10-year lease of the warehouse on Myers Road. That will house our current, what we call Building Seven on the Bayer campus, is a big warehouse. In that big warehouse, Building Seven, our, is our CNC dry food storage and operation, dry goods as well and chemicals. Also in Building Seven is our, one of our IT functions where they receive the devices. So it's like a device storage, about 20 people work in there. And then our security equipment, IT equipment is housed in Building Seven. So the proposal is that this new day will take all of those operations and move them to this Myers, Myers Road Warehouse. In addition, they have to renovate that Myers Road Warehouse to meet FDA requirements. Our food can't just be stored in any old warehouse. It has to meet all these guidelines. So that cost is what we don't know yet. They're working with different vendors to get that renovation cost of the new warehouse. They also propose to lease that new warehouse for us for 10 years and included in that lease are all the maintenance costs and all the utility costs. So we won't pay maintenance, lease, or utilities for our CNC dry storage and dry food operations and the IT and security functions that are also in Building Seven.
For 10 years?
For 10 years.
And that dollar amount equals this 119?
No, the dollar amount right now is estimated around $5 million.
For that 10 years?
For all of that, the lease, the move, and the renovation.
So in essence, they would be paying us $5 million?
$5 million.
That's, I think that's what we needed.
That's the real.
Yes.
We just, that $5 million, the real number, I'll have for you next week as they are still working through all of the costs of that. It's a big, huge endeavor to move all of that stuff.
All right, so we'll have a place to put our, our food store, our food?
Right, so they're already, yeah, for 10 years, there you go.
At no cost?
Right.
And it's been appraised at 7.9?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Love?
How many miles is the new facility from the old facility?
1.5 miles.
And where are the employees going?
They're going with, so the, the employees that are in Building Seven with this, this CNC and security and IT that I'm talking about right now are in one warehouse and they'll go to the new warehouse. The employees that are in the tall administration building with the offices, those employees, there are about eight different departments and those different departments, I'm working with each of those directors to find their new home. And it'll be in one of our underutilized schools or admin buildings.
Has the contract been completed yet?
No, ma'am. We have to get all of the details of exactly what these renovations are going to be at this new warehouse and all of the timelines on moving that big operation out. We want all of that in the contract so that it's all signed, sealed, and delivered so there's no budge on what happens here.
What will happen to the CNC department if this contract is collapses or?
So they'll just stay where they are. We can't do this deal without relocating our CNC operation that's in that warehouse and it's a huge operation. I mean, the warehouse stretches, you know, half the length of the property off from Jackson back to Bell Road. It's a big warehouse. So without them helping us relocate, we can't do this deal because we can't, we don't have the time nor resources to move all of that ourselves.
What's the timeline?
Well, they want to go as fast as possible, so again, next week I'll have more of their details as they work through this actual move cost. And the reason I brought it to you as we're doing it is because I don't want them to keep going forward with their process and their quotes and their timelines and the seven manufacturing companies they have coming for their project. They need to, they need to work, us to work with them as they go so they're not just putting all this out there. Thank you.
So the Myers building is big enough to house everything that you just stated needs to be moved?
Yes, ma'am, and we're actually getting about 33% more space in the Myers Warehouse.
Okay, thank you. No further questions will move. 9.9, approval, district-wide HVAC filter services, $932,937.
Yes, Madam Chair. It's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve the contract with National Filter Solution, Inc. in the amount of $932,937 for district-wide HVAC filter maintenance services.
9.10, approval, athletic field preparation services, $478,617.
Yes, Madam Chair. It's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve the athletic field preparation service contract to Lad Golf and Turf LLC for 14 locations with a total amount not to exceed $379,300 and to APS Facility Maintenance for three locations with a total amount not to exceed $99,317.16. The total amount for these contracted services is $478,617.16.
Vice Chair Love?
Is this a local vendor?
I know Lad Golf is, is APS also local?
That's what I was going to say. I'll find out about APS.
Okay. I know Lad Golf is, both are local, okay.
How many people bid it on this contract locally?
Mr. Langston, can you or is Ms. Braxton, someone from your, your team? Only two vendors bid it?
Locally?
9.11, contract approval, Holland and Knight LLP, $108,000.
Yes, Madam Chair. It's recommended Shelby County Board of Education approve the contract with Holland and Knight LLP for legislative consulting services in the amount of $108,000. The contract period will be from October 1st, 2025 to September 30th, 2026.
9.12 was added, contract approval, healthcare services, RFP Cigna, $41,000, $41,900,000.
Yes, Madam Chair. At this time, I'll allow, Mr. Langston, if you would go through the Cigna contract extension for the board members and I, please, and the listening audience.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Richmond. Board members, so this is a one-year contract extension, as we alluded to in committee. This will get us through the end of the calendar year of 2026. Remember that the, our healthcare contract is on calendar year and not fiscal years. So also what I alluded to is that we will start, we've already started meeting with the, our healthcare consultant who is here now, Mercer, as we'll start undergoing an RFP process to selecting a vendor that'll carry us with a new contract starting in 2027 that'll get us started. And one of the things that we want to do is, we've heard from our, our employee base that we want to improve how we do healthcare insurance. So one of the things we're going to do is add some high-stake investments in the insurance policy. And we're going to bring also our teacher groups along to help us pick who the vendor would be that carries us out. Another thing we want to do is redesign healthcare plans and also look at out-of-pocket expenses for our employees to better our insurance as we go into 2027.
We're now on to board items. 10.1, proposed policies, first readings.
This time, Ms. Green?
We have eight policies for your review, six policies and two administrative rules and regulations. The first policy is Policy 1001, School Superintendent on Read Page 1. The proposed revisions incorporate the Purpose, Scope, Responsibility section, authorizes the superintendent to delegate duties and responsibilities in accordance with the law, clarifies that the superintendent is authorized to establish administrative rules and regulations necessary to implement policies that have been adopted by the board. The next policy on Read Page 3, Policy 2002, Fiscal Year, the recommendation is to repeal this information is included in the Policy on Annual Operating Budget. On Read Page 4, Policy 2004, Internal Accounting Manual, is a statutory revision making the name of the document align to the name that is included in the statute. On Read Page 5, Policy 2020, Travel Expense Policy. This policy allows the district to provide reasonable accommodation for employees of size when unauthorized travel. The next policy is Policy 2021. The next policy is policy 2021, employee additional pay. The revisions remove language for volunteers to be consistent with the scope of the policy. The next policy is policy 6027, searches and interrogations. The policy revisions rename the policy to searches and questioning of students and revises the language from interrogations to questioning of students throughout the document as well as the administrative rules and regulations. Outlines that searches may be conducted on staff, students, visitors, and their personal belongings for entry and for cause, and outlines how such searches should be conducted. It also clarifies that searches may be only conducted by school resource officers who, when acting for the purpose of the search as a school official, a school security officer, or a school administrator. On red page 24, the administrative rules and regulations are reorganized to clarify, for clarity, as well as remove procedural language. It outlines parameters when conducting searches for entry, including condensing language around use of metal detectors. On red page 25, outlines parameters when conducting searches for cause, removes the language regarding interrogations. It clarifies that all standards of reasonableness outlined in the law and the policy must be met when conducting searches of students for cause. It expands the language regarding search of cellular tele, search of cellular phones to include any personal communication, wireless communication device. Finally, on red page 34, it clarifies that law enforcement initiated questioning of students will be in accordance with the law and not occur on school campus. The next two items are items for points of information on page, red page 39 and 40. The policy 4051, professional learning. The revisions outlaw specific professional learning requirements for certified staff, teachers, including clarifying that teachers must complete the minimum number of district-developed or approved professional learning hours each year according to their outlined professional learning track. It removes the 64, this is on red, this is on red page 39 and 40, or 40, right there. It removes the minimum requirement of 64 hours and requires novice and focus track teachers to complete 60 hours of professional learning. That's 45 district school-based hours, five choice, 10 summer optional, and it requires teachers on a proficient track to complete a total of 40 professional learning hours. That's 25 district school-based, five choice, and 10 summer optional. And then on red page 43, the final regulation is a statutory change. The revisions align with the amended state law for state-paid parenting leave. It expands the definition of adoption to include the period from filing of the petition and the child's initial placement until the final adoption order. It establishes criteria for persons to be able to utilize this provision, and it includes those who possess a valid license or hold an emergency credential from the Tennessee Department of Education. Those persons have to be employed full-time with the same district for 12 consecutive months in the position that requires the teaching license or the emergency credential, maintain that license or credential for the full 12 months that they are employed. The revisions also allow state-paid parenting leave to be taken either consecutively or non-consecutively, a minimum, with a minimum of one week, in a minimum of one week increments, and it revises the reinstatement letter to, renames the reinstatement letter to, a letter of clearance. So these are the proposed revisions for September. Are there any questions?
Board Member McKinney?
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Green. Superintendent, if I may?
Yes, she may.
Ms. Green, thank you for this. I have a question about the, and I know this is for information purposes, administrative rules and regs for 4051 professional learning. I know that it is always a source of concern and for teachers and what they are required to do in terms of professional learning. And I wanted to know if, I know that this is aligned to the new academic plan, and I appreciate that. Was there any input that was, that you all got from teachers around this, especially with your novice and focus tracks and proficient track?
Yes, teachers were heavily involved in everything that we've done this year around professional development and our new academic plan. I see Ms. Marable shaking her head, and I want her and Dr. Stokes to know how much we've appreciated them along with Ms. Rivers participating and providing input.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Board Member Williams?
Yeah, there's a concern that I have. When, since the district does not issue state licensure for teachers, why are we requiring and adding to what is needed to renew a teaching certificate or a teaching license? We're adding to, in this item on here, eight hours or nine, something to what they need to renew their teaching certificates that are offered and honored by the state. And the district has absolutely nothing to do with the teachers securing a certificate. So can you add to, how can you stop it from happening if it's a district policy when the district doesn't, doesn't offer certain certificates?
If I may clarify regarding the policy on professional learning, these are district, these are district requirements that are not associated with the state licensure.
So that, so the district has control over breaking a teacher's licensure?
No, sir, this is not in association, this provision is only for professional learning that occurs within the district.
It says teachers are required to complete a minimum of 600, of 64 hours of district development. So what happens if they don't?
Right, yes, sir, that's the, that's the district requirement, but that's not associated with the actual professional, professional licensure. That's a district requirement.
It doesn't impact your license at all?
No, sir, this is not associated.
Board Member O'Teague?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Richmond, two questions for you. Does a teacher have to have 18 cadre hours before November 3rd? Or Dr. Whitelaw?
Ms. Addison, I see you nodding your head. Ms. Addison?
Good evening, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
For flex hours.
Next question. Are flex day hours different from regular PD hours?
Yes, ma'am. The flex hours are, it's an opportunity for teachers to gain professional learning so they can have those days off before Thanksgiving break. So it is, it's not, it's hours that we're asking them to complete outside of the workday and in return, they're able to take those three days, I think it's November the 24th through the 26th.
Thank you.
Vice Chair La.
How many district hours are mandatory and to keep the teachers certified? And how many that we require them to do?
Ms. Addison?
So according to the state, it's 60 hours for certification, but that happens over a course of years.
Five years? Two years?
It's usually 10 years.
So the teachers do this every year?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
No further questions. 10.2 approval, MSCS Board Member Strategic School Fund allocations. We will read this into record on next week. We will ask that you, if you have more that you want to add or you want to do some, contact Karen in the board office by Thursday, by Thursday afternoon, so that you can add to it.
So Chair, but I wanted to say why I wanted to add to it tonight, and especially since our principal of Central High School is here, Principal Amy Epps. Dr. Richmond, first of all, thank you for your social media post I saw regarding the incident with Central High School and their amazing band and how they were banned from a recent football game and the collective effort from the principal, Ms. Epps, and parents and the family of, would you please stand up, Principal Epps? Let's give her a round of applause. She is just a genius, reaching into her own pocket to buy kazoo's for the band and then for parent support, paying for all the tickets. I want to just honor that and, you know, acknowledge them with $2,500 for the band program at Central because that was just brilliant. That protest was just brilliant and it's just, just wonderful to see how the community as a whole have come around them and supported them. And if you have not been to a game to hear the Central High School band play, which I did a few weeks ago, it is second, I mean, it's just amazing. I mean, they blow it out the water. So if you, this Friday night, go check them out wherever they are. Thank you.
Where will you be this Friday night, Professor?
At Central High School.
This, this Bell Road and Hamilton game.
I'm gonna be there. Vice Chair La.
I want to comment for Central. I saw it on the news, and I just was devastated. You have an amazing school and the students, and good luck. We are rooting for you, and the man is amazing.
Board Member McKinney? Board Member Murphy?
I just wanted to say, and I think I said this to you earlier, thank you for teaching, making this a teachable moment for our students in civil disobedience. It was amazing. I found out about it from somebody in Oberlin, Ohio. So this has been, this, one of my friends said, is this true? And I said, yes, this is absolutely true. But you led your students in such a way that it's just amazing, and I hope that they understand how important that lesson was and is, and how that will make, that will help them down the line. So thank you very much.
I wanted to, is it on? Okay, because I got a different mic than everybody else, I'm special today. I want to say thank you so much for showing leadership to those children and the discipline that they showed that day, so I appreciate that. And I want to piggyback off of what Dr. Richmond stated in his statement that we need to just find out how we need to deal with this and let, let's not let this happen again. But thank you for the leadership and thank you for what you did.
We truly appreciate you. We truly appreciate you. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.